Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Winslow Township Board of Education regular meeting Tuesday, November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates in a notice dated August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Adequate and electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in the Courier Post, posted in all schools, the administration office, the municipal building, the library, Bud Dubel Center, Edgewood Acres, Elm Town, and the Winslow Township Post Offices. Our mission statement: The mission of the Winslow Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate all students to become independent, lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and competent members of their community. The district, in partnership with the community and in a climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages students to strive for personal excellence, and assists them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
He'll be absent tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Redden?
She will also be absent tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Claude?
Present.
Ms. Martin? Mr. McManus?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Present.
Ms. Pitts?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Present.
And Mr. Shaw?
Present.
We have a call.
Can we please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, republic which stands on nature, under God, indivisible,天地. Ms. Peterson, can you please read our two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six district goals?
Certainly. Two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six district goals. One, student achievement. Continue to implement research-based best practices for delivering instruction and accelerating learning for all students, including all subgroups. This shall include: One, conduct weekly administrative walkthroughs to monitor teaching and learning. Two, utilize the district diagnostic assessment platform to analyze student data to inform and guide instructions, monitor and track measurable growth in ELA and mathematics in grades one through nine. And the final one, to implement creative ways to accelerate student learning by providing additional support throughout and beyond the school day. Number two, promote a positive environment for students and staff. One, enforce the code of conduct to ensure safety for students and staff and compliance with district policy. Two, incorporate social-emotional learning opportunities for students to celebrate positive behavior. Three, develop strategies for students with significant behaviors to reduce the interruptions of instructional time, decrease negative actions, and improve student school attendance. And the final one, number three, increase stakeholders' engagement. Explore and expand innovative opportunities, increase parent communication, create parent learning opportunities with a focus on how to support this children's learning. And the final one, continue to share the accomplishments of Winslow students in all student activities.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Moving on to awards and presentations, Mr. Pease?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Mr. Douglas Reed. Douglas Reed is one of the most sought-after and inspirational voices in the country. A passionate advocate for mental health awareness and social justice. Doug is the CEO of Douglas and Reed LLC and a former director of partnerships with Black Men Heal, where he helped design and launch programs that shape the organization's mission. Douglas currently serves as a consultant to the American Psychiatric Association Foundation, bringing expertise and lived experience as a field liaison and program representative. He supports initiatives focused on social justice, veterans, mental health awareness, and faith communities, contributing to programs such as Notice, Talk, Act, and advisory work groups for schools and justice initiatives. His life and experiences has fueled his commitment to mentoring youth, supporting rehabilitation, and preventing justice and involvement. He will be presenting a PowerPoint on Notice, Talk, Act, a program that supports mental health of our students, and we're happy to have him here tonight, Doug.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Board members. Not only am I a facilitator for the Notice, Talk, Act with the American Psychiatric Association, I'm also a resident of Winslow. One of the things about this is I want to bring this program, at least give you guys some input. I do this around the country, but what better way to actually do this than right here in Winslow? But this will be just an introduction piece. The Notice, Talk, Act, it is actually a program, as it states, a mental health professional development training that empowers K through twelve and higher education staff. Notice, Talk, Act, at school. The program's framework is the notice, where students show early warning signs of mental health concerns. Talk, where students about mental health to engage and support them. Act, refers students to the right kinds of resources they need and can access in your school and community or community. Some data. The Youth Mental Health, the CDC report from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fourteen reports that raise urgency to invest in schools as a vital lifeline. Nearly one in five ages, youth ages twelve to seventeen, twenty percent, reported having unmet mental health care needs. Potential impacts on this training? Seventy percent reduction in truancy, eighty-nine percent reduction in discipline referrals, ninety-nine percent reduction in major mental health events, a hundred and seventy-one increase percent increase in referrals to support services. This program is actually done around the country. How is this training unique? One, it's free, because we are funded by the SAMSA, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Other training that you, if you choose to pay for it, will cost you anywhere from seventy-five dollars to two thousand dollars. Targeted audience: All school staff, specific training for teachers or school personnel. Ninety minutes to two hours, depending on the delivery mode. I can probably tell you it'll be ninety minutes, as far as me being the facilitator. The concepts: High quality, evidence-informed strategies, customized and tailored in the school community, to the school community. So we won't do anything in reference to this program without your consent or your military, I'll say your chain of command, in reference to how you recognize those school concerns. The format: You can do it hybrid, or live, virtual, or train the trainer. My recommendation is train the trainer, since I'm only five minutes away. Additional components: Ongoing support and access to new materials. The footprint. Like I said, we're doing this actually across the country. You see some of the states listed more on the east coast, but we are currently working with the Give me a second. I know there's a lot of violence or projected violence, as people say, within the around the country, and we are currently working with organizations around the country. The School Safety Abbotacy Council, if you can look them online, and actually, they go around the country to reduce school violence and school violence in schools, but we're working closely with them as well. To do it, three methods to fit your needs. Like I said, direct training, certify an instructor, who delivers the training with your school's and mental health team. Up to three development hours to customize the training for your school. That's why I said very important that we customize it according to how you guys operate. Train the trainer, instructors, that actually moved too fast for me. Train the trainer, instructor training for your school's mental health team, your train instructors deliver training to the school or district. This training is free, once again. K through twelve US schools and are fully funded by SAMSA, as I stated before. How to engages? Preview the training. You can actually email us, but we've already had contact and bringing it to, you know, this presentation, bringing you aware of it. You can actually go online and look at it. There are some free webinars to actually look at. You know, those dates, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty six, three to four thirty PM, which is which is online. But the program, I've done this around the country. One of the things that helped me, I became a mental health advocate, because of certain traumas that I had in my life, and I end up working with an organization called Black Men Heal, they give free therapy to black men. And mental health has become a buzzword, and now with the availability of actually having awareness within the schools, you know, one thing, I work closely with the organization, they give mental health training to barbers. The same thing applies when I think about teachers, and I say, because you are the first responders, when we think about kids, we think about, you know, one thing that pops up a lot in our children is anger. How do they identify anger? What's the cause of that anger? What are some of the things that you know is about that child when it comes to anger? You know, is there fear, or are they being bullied? So there's a lot. Mental health is a thing that, especially now, by being a buzzword, children are more aware. I was just in Paulsbury talking to some kids last week, and you'd be surprised, even, and that was, no, they were third graders, what they know about mental health, what they know about the self-awareness. I had a young lady stand up and she introduced herself, and she said, "I'm pretty, I'm intelligent, and I'm going to be a success." But just that reinforcement, when we talk about mental health, it's not always the issues. We're talking about the well-being, the wellness of it, you know, how are our children operating? They have a thing they call the eight dimensions of wellness, you know, physically, you know, how they, how things, you know, as far as what they eat, their jobs, their working, in the homes, their emotion, their environment, you know, one thing that, for me, even moving to Winslow five years ago, there should be a sign on seventy, on seventy-three, I'm not sure if it's still there, but it said, "Welcome to Winslow," we are, you know, the diversity within the community, you know, that played, that played a big part, but that's the environment that's already set. So I just wanted to come to you, it was a brief synopsis as far as what the program, you know, is about, it's free through SAMSA, there's some additional information, you know, if you guys, you know, you vote on it, or, you know, how that plays out, but, you know, I'm always here. You guys got any questions? Please feel free.
Mr. Reed, just one brief question, I, perhaps I missed this, but the sessions that you conduct with the training, you say are about three hours?
Well, it says ninety, ninety minutes to two hours. I've been doing it roughly about two, I mean, about ninety minutes.
Right, and so, when you come into the districts to provide this training, over what period of time? Is it a one-day issue, or is it a one?
Yeah, it's one day, but there's additional resources that the association would actually give you, but it's actually just a one-day, ninety-minute presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, is there any local schools that you have put this training in, in the New Jersey area?
That's, well, what happens is, that's my job, and I say my job because I've done it around the country, but New Jersey is one of those areas in which I live that I would actually love to actually get this program. So Winslow will probably be the first, if you guys choose to do it, but it's, you know, the last, my last stop that I did was down in a military academy down in South Carolina, but no, no schools as of currently, right now, in New Jersey. Winslow is always about being first, right? Winslow winning?
Always.
Okay.
Doug, thank you for presenting tonight, and I look forward to speaking with you more about getting this up and running in Winslow School District. I spoke to Kate and had a great conversation with her, and so I'll work with my assistant superintendent about scheduling some time for our teachers to receive this free training, just to be an extra set of eyes in our district and making sure the well-being of our students are looked over and looked at. So thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Happy Thanksgiving.
So next we have Ms. Alma Martinez Walsh, and she is the Site Director of Orchard's Family Success Center for a community-based and family-centered neighborhood gathering place located in the heart of Sicklerville, New Jersey. Community residents can go for family support, interactive workshops, activities, and groups. Their activities are always free and open to all families in the community. Please welcome Ms. Martinez Walsh.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I really appreciate having this opportunity. My name is Alma Martinez Walsh. I'm the Site Director for Orchard's Family Success Center. Before I dive in a little bit more about who we are, I always like to introduce our team. We're a team of three, so you get to know us pretty quickly. So we have our family partner, Catrice Bailey. She is in charge of the resources, connecting our families with resources, connecting other additional resources to ourself as well. Tatiana Vega, she's our volunteer and community partnership coordinator. She's in charge of maintaining our partnerships with additional organizations and gathering our volunteers in the center, and assists me with the programming. And then currently, we do have a bachelor's intern, her name is Shamara McLean. And this is the three of us at one of our community events that we hosted last June. It was a women's empowerment event. So again, a little bit about who we are. This is a few pictures of what our lobby area looks like, but as what was just said, we are a community-based neighborhood gathering place located in Sicklerville, New Jersey. Specifically, we're on Sicklerville Road, right across from the post office. We actually just celebrated thirteen years in September, so that was really a great milestone to hit. Community residents can come to us for family support, interactive workshops, activities, groups, community events, resources, so forth. Again, we are always free and open to everyone. I also want to mention, while yes, we are here in Winslow Township in Sicklerville, again, we're open to everyone, so if there are other family members who live elsewhere or around the Camden County area or additional counties, we'll service anybody. So to dive more into our services, we offer computer access, printing, faxing, copying, educational workshops, parent-child activities, community events, connection to resources. We have baby diapers, wipes, baby formula, feminine hygiene products. Depending on the time of year, we'll have toys, we'll have clothing, we can have food. You know, based on what was just happening with the SNAP benefits in November, we quickly got a small food pantry together for this holiday season. So it really just depends on what's happening throughout the year, and we're making sure that we're listening to our community's needs so that we can service better. We also have Medicaid assistance. I apologize, that's a typo. It's actually now the second Tuesday of every month with Horizon, and now we also just added another coming the third Wednesday of every month. So we have Medicaid assistance. Additionally, we also have first-time homebuyer consultation appointments, and again, different things pop up depending on the year. So to dive more into what our workshops look like, we cover different contracted services that would include access to health, parent education, parent-child activities, housing, employment, life skills, and advocacy. A few examples of our previous workshops under health and wellness, we've had Zumba classes, family cooking, cancer prevention workshops, we recently just had a veterans' appreciation event. We've also had mental health workshops and so forth. For housing, as previously mentioned, we have our first-time homebuyer consultation appointments, we've also had Habitat for Humanity Come, we have resume assistance. Catrice, our family partner, does a really great job of making sure that we're up to date on the available jobs in the area and keeping our job board up to date, so you could even come to the center to, if you need assistance with that. Parent-child activities include STEM workshops, parent cafes, family movie nights, crafts, parenting skills workshops, we have Girl Scouts for certain age groups. In December, we're looking forward to our pictures with Santa and Holiday Party. We have things for ages five and under specifically as well. And you know, whatever else community members have ideas for. We also do computer basics, a sewing class, visually impaired support group, we have a social circle for our seniors. And we've done a variety of different community events as well that are more public and larger. We have volunteer and partnership opportunities. We're always looking for volunteers, specifically those who can facilitate a workshop, you know, maybe help organize table at events. We always welcome different organizations to table. We're really looking to just be a resource connection. We're here for the community, so if there are other organizations that like to come into the center and their services are free or low cost, you know, we certainly want to connect families to them as well. I want to point a special interest to our Orchard's Community Advisory Committee. This is something that we're really working to expand in the new year. This is for parents and individuals who are active in the community and want to just contribute more to the programming in the center and give feedback on the different resources that are really needed, that we need to touch base more on, what type of areas need to be addressed. We're really looking for a lot of feedback from community members, partners, and so forth. Just to quickly talk about our impact in Camden County. So for July two thousand and twenty four to June two thousand and twenty five, we had a total of nine hundred and five registered families for the entire year. As of right now, from July two thousand and twenty five to about October, because this does not include November, three hundred and eighty-six registered households we have so far, so, you know, we're looking on a steady increase. Public events, last year, we had our Father's Day Appreciation Fair for the first time. We had a hundred individuals, ten resource vendors, we had a community baby sprinkle, forty parents of children three months and under and expecting came. We had our back-to-school event, which was our largest event. We had four hundred and forty-nine individuals. We gave out two hundred book bags filled with school supplies. We had food and twenty resource vendors. We just had our Thanksgiving turkey giveaway this past Saturday, where we were able to give away seventy turkeys with bags of sides. And in December, we are going to be giving out, or sponsoring fifty kids for holiday toys. And how you can stay connected is we are on social media, on Instagram and Facebook. We always post our monthly calendars. The programming changes monthly, so that that's how you'll get the most up-to-date information. We also have our website, and both on the website and social media platforms, we're also sharing other resources besides ourselves. Again, we're here to connect the families to resources that are going to benefit them. Our whole idea is to help our parents, our children, our families become self-sufficient. So we're not doing it for them, we're trying to show them how to do it, right? So you can find resources, more information about the advisory committee, our registration for our workshops, contact information, so forth, on our website, our hours of operation. We also have our general Gmail that you can contact and our phone number to contact us if you have additional questions. And that's it. So I just would like to ask you, if you have any questions, this is something I'm very passionate about. I also live in Winslow Township, so I really truly want to see, you know, more families benefiting from these services and just looking forward to collaborating and partnering with you all in the future.
Just want to thank you for coming out and sharing this valuable information for our community, and I hope that we, as a school district, can be able to guide some of our kids and parents and community members to your center to get, to be part of the active activities that you have. Those activities that I see on your calendar are amazing. I hope that we can gather the community to, you know, do a little bit more participation in your organization, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With our partners, we like to thank you for coming out tonight, and, you know, it's important that we establish and continue great partnerships with community service organizations and national organizations like Mr. Reed's organization, Notice, Talk, Act, and it's all about our partnerships and what we can do to connect our students and our families to great services and support that's out there. to great services and support that's out there. And these are two free services that seem like they can have a huge impact on our community. And I just want to make sure that we do what's necessary on our end to connect, advertise, and promote the great work that you're doing and make sure that our kids are being touched by it all. So thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Moving on to correspondence.
We have none this evening. Mr. President.
Mr. President, did Wanda have an award presentation? Oh, sorry. Moving on to our minutes. Can I have a motion to approve our meeting minutes from our regular Board of Education meeting, open and closed session from Wednesday, November 12th, 2025?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve our minutes meeting from Wednesday, November 2025, open and closed session.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. All right, any questions? No questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion as carried.
Moving on to Board Committee reports. Our student representative isn't here for this meeting, so we'll move on to our Athletic Committee. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, we do. Just starting off, that our winter sports are now in progress. Tryouts for basketball and cheerleading, November 24th and 26th. Track and wrestling now gearing up. Our first basketball game is at the great city of Camden on December 8th. Our girls will be playing on December 16th. Indoor track will be at U Penn December 13th. And our second annual, December 29th and the 30th, will be our girls' basketball championship. Of course, our football state championship bound Winslow Township football team will be second straight year of state champion this Sunday at Rutgers, starting at 3:00 P.M. Now, also noted, our quarterback, Jalen Parker, has now tied the most TDAM touchdown receptions in the state of New Jersey. So with one more, he will break and have the state of New Jersey touchdown reception. Our girls' cross-country historic achievement, the Lady Cross Country team that delivered a record-breaking season. Thirteen in South Jersey for the first time in school history. Six in the sectional champions, first time in school history. Our boys' track and field elite qualification, Mr. Benny Perry has qualified for the meet of championships, marking the first time in school history an athlete has reached this level in boys' track. This is a landmark achievement for Winslow Track. And I'd just like to discuss some college commitments that are now in play on another level commonly here in this season that we're in. Amaya Broner, University of Kentucky. Olia Akia, University of Connecticut. Leah Joseph, St. Joseph University. Aquir Hilton, University of Carolina, now there with Bill Belichick. And Jewel, better known as Julian Peterson, has his option of North Carolina. Clemson, Penn State. And the King Power, University of Delaware. Once again, all of these offers are Division I schools that require esteemed academic excellence. And we should be proud to be in a position to say that we have college commitments and college offers at this stage. And that is the report coming from the Athletic.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Ms. Claude, you have something to add to the academic report?
Yes, I have presentation as well. But I'll give you the stats from the Winslow Elite Boys. They played against the Brick Organization on last Sunday and the score was 19-0, leading them to a state championship. They're going to Nationals in Florida, December 6th. So our Winslow Elite 11U will be playing nationally against 11U's across the nation. Winslow Elite 8U versus Cherry Hill last weekend. They beat them 6-0, leading them to play the States coming up this weekend. And Winslow 10U played Del Ran and beat them 13-0. And they're also going for a state championship as well. The Winslow Elite organization was sanctioned by Winslow Township on March 2026. So that made it a very, a new organization that took over the original Maulers. And there were two board members here in our presence that were intricate in the success of our youth, success that we have right now today. So I would like to be able to acknowledge the two gentlemen from the Winslow Elite president and read the letters if you don't mind. For Jerry McManus, dear Mr. McManus, on behalf of Winslow Elite Football and Flag, I would like to express our deepest gratitude for your generous donation of office services to print over 3,500 flyers distributed through our school district for our organization's registration efforts. Your support directly enabled us to reach more families in our community, helping to grow our program. Your commitment to community helps our organization to provide opportunities for student athletes to succeed both on and off the field. Your contribution helps us promote equal opportunity for all children in our community to learn and participate in football, increase awareness of our new Winslow football program and how families can get involved, demonstrate the power of community collaboration in building healthy, active futures for our youth. We deeply appreciate your willingness to lend your skills and resources to support the local youth sports. Your generosity reflects the community spirit that makes Winslow strong. Thank you once again for your time, effort, and support. We look forward to sharing updates on the program for years to come. With sincere appreciation, Christina Harrison, President of Winslow Elite Football and Flag.
You have me at a disadvantage. I totally forgot about that.
Well, we didn't. And the next person is Mr. Joe Thomas. Dear Mr. Thomas, on behalf of Winslow Elite Football and Flag, I would like to express our deepest gratitude for your generous donation of AV practice jerseys and sponsorship. Your support has had an immediate and lasting impact on our athletes and our program. Your contribution helped us purchase high-quality practice jerseys for each athlete upon registration, demonstrate our organization, parent, and athletes the true meaning of community and connection, promote teamwork, discipline, and sportsmanship both on and off the field, support the development of youth football in the community by making participation accessible to more players. We are proud to recognize Mr. Joe, Winslow Joe Thomas, for his commitment to our athletes and our community. Your generosity embodies the spirit of teamwork and community service that football teaches us every day. Thank you once again for your invaluable support. With sincere appreciation, Ms. Christina Harris, President, Winslow Flag, Winslow Elite Football.
Winslow, Winslow, Winslow.
So in conclusion, when we, as the elders of our community, continue to give to our youth and show and lead our youth the way, we empower them to be great. So thank you for your community and your service to our youth and continued forward. Thank you.
Great job, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Claude. Moving on to our Citizens Advisory Committee. Moving on to our Education Committee.
Unit rates. High doses. A. After. There are current 70. High doses. 79. After. Technical. Science, math. Sign up and come is needed. fluctuate schedules. But any. Hundreds. I did, started on. After. And then. Professional development. Most. Valuation, average score. ELA pilot. Your current, current. Pilot. Amplify. Knowledgeable, knowledge. Benchmark. Magnetic. HMM. H. Amplify ELA. Abyss, 9%. Professional development, and last year. After-school meetings, actively held with piloting. That's very. Excellent. Final decision, by the end of November. Goal of attending the selected program. All programs and materials. Action on this. High quality. Questions posed by the. Hard as to count. Have, you have 500. Martin, ask for. Early childhood center. 100. High five. 700. High school. But ask how many. And this is. Thousand. Thousand. Active. Not accurate, like two. One parent. Also, not maybe. Ask how many. Acting, current staffing number. 500. I just. 520. 5. 7. It's an S four. Aginal. 520. 517. Ask how, track student. And be tracked. Diagnosed.
Martin, I'd like to add to the report. I'd like to add to the report if you don't mind. Just having a conversation with Ms. Clement about the future rollout of Chromebooks to our high school students. We are not seeing enough parents completing the forms and signing off on the Chromebook agreement. And the vibe that we're feeling is, and this is coming from our staff, that students are interested in a one-to-one initiative. So I'm going to continue to promote this. But if there is a need to pivot, we may have to pivot just based on the students' interest at this time. Now, I don't know if this is because it is a mid-year rollout or if it's something that because over time, students have pulled away from that learning style here at Winslow, but it's something that we need to look at. That's not to say that devices won't be available to our students in class or if some students need support with devices at home. But we have to really look at what the kids are telling us by their lack of interest in this rollout. So I'm going to meet with Ms. Clement and Mr. Morella and we're going to think about this a little bit more and come up with some, you know, ideas on how to continue to promote it and see what this brings us. You know, our original goal was to make sure that these high school students receive their devices before winter break. And we're still on schedule to do that. But if they're not signing up or if they refuse to take them, that's going to be a different story and that's something that we have to look at and prepare for. So just a conversation that I wanted to make sure you heard and know that this is something that we're looking into and we'll continue to make sure our students are provided with the best tools, resources, and opportunities to be successful. Thank you.
I have an addition, a question in regards to that. Is it a possibility that many, because they're the older crowd, the high school, that many of those children who are not interested in receiving a device already have their own laptops that they're using? And we can possibly see if that's the reason why we're not getting a bite?
That, that could possibly be it. You know, we'll, we'll look into that. But right now, we're seeing signs that it's a very low turnout on signing those forms. And so I'll, I'll do some more marketing to get that information out there. But we'll also survey our students to see if they have devices already. So we're talking almost three-quarters of the population that haven't signed up yet. So, and only a quarter have. So it's something that we need to look into.
Anything else for the Education Committee? Moving on to the Marketing Committee, Mr. McManus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Marketing Committee meetings, Marketing Committee met on the Saturday, the 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. And attendance was Joe Thomas and Jerry McManus. The discussion centered around the Academic Culture and Arts Hall of Fame, something long-proposed by the CAC. Joe Thomas put together what I say is a great. Uh, Joe Thomas put together what I say is a great framework, uh, that we can definitely amend after collaboration by members of the committee. Uh, the purpose of the, uh, Academic and Cultural Arts Hall of Fame is to establish and honor individuals whose achievements, leaderships, service, or cultural contributions have have significantly elevated the reputation, pride, and academic excellence within the school district. This initiative aims to inspire current students, strengthen alumni engagement, and celebrate the diverse accomplishments that help define, uh, the character of our community. Objectives, uh, recognize graduates, educators, community leaders, and cultural contributors who embody this excellence. Uh, to preserve and promote the academic, artistic, and, uh, cultural heritage of the district, and to build stronger connections among the alumni, staff, students, and community partners. And then also to create an annual tradition that highlights the district's commitment to academic growth and cultural enrichment. All these, all these goals, uh, help to increase shareholder accomplishments of the Winslow Township and, uh, in, in all activities is one of our stated goals within the district. Uh, funding for this is to come from identified sponsors working in conjunction with local nonprofits. Uh, events will be, events will help in fundraising and recognizing the recipients and, and, uh, broadening the community outreach. Should be held about once a year, uh, at a local venue. Committee would like to call for an open call to see who would like to participate in this, and our meeting closed at 10:30 a.m. Maybe we could do that in the new business section.
Okay, again, Mr. President.
I was gonna say to try to come up with a committee that would be able to help spearhead this effort, maybe we can have an open call during, uh, our new business section.
Okay. Thank you. And that's it. And thank you, Mr. Thomas, for putting that together. Any questions on the marketing committee report? Moving on to the operations committee.
Mr. Shaw, Ms. Dredon is absent this evening, but if you'd like, I could read the minutes.
If you would like, that's fine.
So the operations committee, we met yesterday, Tuesday, November 24th, at 5:30, uh, over teams. In attendance were Ms., Ms. Dredon came in, uh, Mr. Shaw and Mr. McManus. Also in attendance were Ms. Boyle, Ms. Chico, and Mr. Peace. And we discussed the, um, four projects that were, uh, received in on November 24th, 2025. Uh, the H V A C upgrades at School Five, that project came in, but it was over budget. Uh, the H V A C upgrades at School Six, that project came in, it was also over budget. Uh, the construction of the pole barn, we did not accept the bids because we discovered a material misstatement or mistake in the bid spec from the architect. So we decided we're not going to open it, uh, and we put it back out for bid. So it is currently back out for bid. Uh, and upgrades to the serving lines at the high school cafeteria, that project is on tonight's agenda for, uh, approval. And although we had anticipated awarding all of those projects this evening, the bidders do have to hold their bid prices for 60 days. So School Five and School Six, we're going to, uh, contact the county about withdrawing additional funds from, uh, capital reserve to fund those projects and approve them. Uh, we're going to look for less than 10%, though. Uh, and during the budget process, we made certain that 10% of each project would be there for us to access in case uh, pricing began to fluctuate. Though we're not blown out of the water. Other capital projects, we were at the tail end of the high school main office, H V A C upgrade. Uh, and then we had the flood. Uh, that project is still on course. Um, I had reported out, or we had reported out that, um, E I's mechanical engineer had, uh, completed a final inspection. He created a, a couple of punch list items. Two of those items, uh, they're very immaterial, but they remain outstanding. I believe another walkthrough is scheduled within the next week, I believe. Um, and as soon as those two items are addressed, that project will be completed. Nothing was damaged in the flood. Nothing that they had done. So that, that was, that was good. Food service fund has a deficit balance of forty six thousand eight twenty seven ninety one in meals served but not paid. So the fund itself has money, but we are serving meals and we're not collecting the balance. That number is, uh, that figure is as of yesterday. That's for the twenty twenty six, that's twenty seven budget development pro, uh, process. Uh, during a tri-county meeting, it was suggested that the district, so all the districts within three counties, uh, we were told to develop several budgets, uh, since we weren't sure how this new administration, what their position would be on school funding. Um, as for us, we will develop a flat budget, which means we're going to anticipate, um, our tax levy increase, and we're going to anticipate state funding at the same level that we received this year. If they give us more woo-hoo, uh, there's always someplace we can put it. If they take or give us less, we'll have to look into, um, carrying that budget back. So we're just, at this point, uh, we had, um, distributed the building base and the department-based budget based on their, um, current activity and, uh, the buildings based on their A S S A counts. We take the number of killed children in the building, assign a dollar figure, um, and then come up with a budget for the schools. We send it out and let the principals budget the money, um, as best they can, uh, where they would want. Their, their budgets are due by December 19th, 2025. I will not look at them on December 19th, 2025. But we hope Mr. Peace lets us out, and we will be going home. But we'll come back in January. And thank, oh, well, thank you for the break. Uh, we will, we will be, um, generous break. Uh, we will get back on track with the budget, um, and so we can get a developed balance and out to the community, um, by the deadline, which will be in March. However, the operations committee will be, um, in on it with us, as we try to share where we are, what's going on. The 2024-2025 Annual Comprehensive Financial Uh, the auditors have compiled the financial reports. Uh, they were preparing for the filing for our, uh, report. State came out and said that doesn't matter. They want the deadline. They want the auditors to meet the December 5th deadline. However, if you have a federal audit, the federal audit compliance statement has not come out. So they were kinda in limbo. Uh, Bowman, who is our auditors, made a statement that if you don't have a federal compliance, they will make the December 5th. If you do, they're not going to make that because they can't, they can't take those audit pages, pull them apart, issue a portion of it, then when the compliance supplement comes out, redo it again. So they, they took that stance. Counties, I know, uh, was it Gloucester? I can't remember. One of the southern counties was supportive. The county B A was supportive. Um, we got an update today that they're not going to penalize us if we don't make the December 15th deadline. Um, they're not going to penalize the districts, and, uh, that gives Bowman the opportunity to go back now so that they have the supplement to make sure that everything, uh, is compliant with that supplement, since we do have federal funding, and they did audit some of our federal program. So, uh, I know our audit went through technical. We didn't have, uh, a problem, but it gives them the opportunity to take a look at the, their filing so that it is compliant. Um, I think the odd sum still has to get uploaded by December 5th, and that's a statement of all the budget numbers, because all of those figures will be populated into, uh, the budget software when it's released to us. So I believe that still has to make the, uh, December 5th deadline. So they had us nervous, you know, and then they, yes, or today, we got the and, uh, so that's how my heart beats, like. Uh, our meeting adjourned at 6:07, and the next meeting is to be permanent, since we only have one meeting in December, and, and that's, uh, December 10th. I don't know how much is going to happen between, uh, now and the night. And that concludes.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving on to the policy committee. Ms. Pitts?
Mr. President, there is, um, currently no, um, policy report at this time, but our next meeting of the committee will take place on December 10th at 6:00 p.m., um, in district.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to Mr. Thomas and the Economic Development Council and the Municipal Drug Alliance.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Um, for the planning board, everything was moved to either December 11th on an extension, or the three other, um, projects were given one-year extensions, so nothing is moving, uh, as a planning board for the township. So that is my report for the planning board. So moving on to the superintendent's report, and I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report as it's recommended for approval by the superintendent from the top of page three to the bottom of page eight.
President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the superintendent's report top of page three all the way to the bottom of page.
I have a second.
Second.
Any questions?
Just one brief question, um, with regards to, um, page six, number nineteen. I'm just wondering if that's accurate or it could be accurate. Because it says the, the 2027 prom, so we plan a year and a half ahead.
Very efficient, Todd.
Oh, they really are. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. McManus, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, just a, just a minor question. On the same page, page six, number 22, high school, a Muslim Student Association, uh, would this be the first, like, religious organization? Meeting? I don't think so, is it?
Yeah.
All right. No, that's great. No, I was really glad to see that. I know that's a growing community in the, in the area. Thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Moving on to the Business Administrator Board Secretary's report, and I have a motion to approve the Business Administrator Board Secretary's report as it's recommended for approval by the Business Administrator Board Secretary from the top of page nine to the bottom of page seventeen.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Business Administrator Secretary Report as it is submitted from the top of page nine all the way to the bottom of page seventeen.
I have a second.
Second.
Any questions? No questions. Roll call, please.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Ms. Boyle, you're gonna hate me. I got a stain from number six, letter A, number J, two, seven, two, seven, P O, number six, oh, two, six, one, two. And then number twenty six, number twenty seven, and number thirty one. Everything else, yes.
Can you repeat that?
Slowly.
Number six.
You're gonna abstain on number six?
Number six, letter A, number J, seven, two, seven, P O, s, number six, two, oh, two, six, one, two. And then number twenty six, number twenty seven, and number thirty one.
Six. Six, twenty seven, thirty one.
And everything else is a yes.
I believe the motion has carried. Yes, the motion has carried.
Moving on to the personnel report. And I have a motion to pass the personnel report uh, as the superintendent recommends it's for approval, from the top of page eighteen to the bottom of page twenty one.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the personnel report from the top of page even as the superintendent recommends from the top of page eighteen to the bottom of page.
Twenty one.
To the bottom of page twenty one.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to addendum, since we don't have an addendum, we will move on to, uh, Open Public Records Act.
Um, none this evening.
Informational items? No? Oh, you got one? Okay. Ah, no, you're good. You got it.
Uh, update one, the middle school. We've been in discussion with the contractor, and we are looking at, uh, things moving quickly. I just want to thank the team for their hard work. Um, Ms. Pennock, utilities manager, Principal Shropshire, Mrs. Boyle, Ms. Clement, and everyone who's working hard to see this project through. There's times when we think, or we feel like things could move faster, and it's our job to make sure that we keep the foot, our foot on the pedal and make sure that our contractors are working and maintaining the same level of expectations that we hold for the completion of this job. So but like any construction project, you know, sometimes you're at the mercy of contractor or the work that is being done, and dealing with an older building, there's always new surprises. But thank you to our team for their hard work each and every day to, uh, get us closer to the completion of this job. First marking period ends on, it ended on November 10th, and report cards were issued on the 20th. Parent conferences will be held on December 9th, 10th, 11th. We're excited for our football team as they travel to Rutgers to participate in the state championship game. A feat that many schools find difficult to accomplish, especially when it's back-to-back. And finally, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We have so much to be thankful for. I'm thankful for this opportunity. I'm thankful for the people here at this table that I work alongside with, and I'm happy for the team that I work with each and every day provide opportunities for our young people in the Winslow Township community. So I hope that your break is restful and full of good thanks. And I'd like to just finish with be well, be kind. The Weegles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peace.
Mr. President, I have an informational.
Yes, sir.
This week continued to showcase why Winslow Township strong and determined in our return to excellence, not only are um, we are. My recent visit, I noticed importantly, building was immaculate. That's what I'm just in love with. The mind is felt like best order intentional. We're in a tough, the mind is felt like, that's, or intentional, despite, with the rescue of other levels, not, not building. Every class, that being interactive, far as the passing, there's no white words, that alone, this level, for your mind, is a work, the center pool, we now stand, without, hands on learning, you know, the coal there, the last, the real course, walk away, and we do, Mr. Trump, of the, President, the union, like, arts and things, not as well, the performance, having, having a word with him, burning the ducks, do this thing, do this thing, and, this is, not, do you want, once, once, a business, five, every, every, you need, this is a new style, and, and, all that's given, we don't, our students are working in computer technology that rise, professional, academic, celebrating, several thousands of, already extended to us, the opportunity, truly liked, by, by, by national athlete, we are also proud to share, two of our student athletes, leaving in January to attend Division 1 University. These achievements proves that academic cooperation, athletic commitment must work hand-in-hand in the Winslow Township, that absolutely, I am immensely proud of our staff, grateful for our board and home, who have served this district for the past three years. I remain number one fan, Winslow Township, students, educators, program, and the spirit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
It's always so welcoming to hear great stories coming from observations from our board members when they visit the schools. Mr. Thomas, I appreciate that because the community really needs to know that what's inside the building, we are really doing a great job with these students and we're moving forward in this district, so thank you for that report and it was well needed.
Anybody else for informational? What's that?
Production?
Mm-hmm.
I.
I forget what it is as well. Um, I have something before we move on. Friday, I was at the high school and had the privilege of talking to some of our CTE students at, for Eagles Landing, on behalf of my job with the Carpenters Union, and it was really, truly, you know, remarkable to see some of the, you know, students that aren't going to college and their interest in the trades, and even some of the ones that are going into the military, when they found out that I had a military background that came over to talk to me, and when they came over and talked to me about possibilities after their military service and what the trades have to offer, to think that they're that forward-thinking at this young of an age is remarkable, and to know what the trades have to offer them, even with our programs and our partnerships with the military, is outstanding, so they're already years out thinking ahead, so that's, that says something about our students here in Winslow. And then, like Mr. Thomas said, for our football team, I spent most of the day Saturday here at the football field watching that incredible football game, it was a little nerve-wracking to watch, but, and that, you know, so congratulations to our football team, and I can't wait till this weekend to go watch them up in Rutgers, but to cap it all off Saturday night, to watch our students in our drama club and our stage crew, and the remarkable set, sets that they put together, the acting and just everything that came together with the Charlotte's Web Play, it was just another one in a long line of performances that I've seen throughout the years from our students. The support that comes from the board each and every time that those students put together another one of those presentations is absolutely remarkable. So I, not only thank you for, to each and every one of you on the board, but congratulations to each and every student that was out there this weekend, and every one of the seniors that I talked to, I look forward to seeing what every one of them does in their future because each and every one of them, and each and every student that walks through the halls of Winslow Township School District are truly remarkable, and I can't wait to see what they bring for, forward to this world. So that, that's all I have for today.
Mr. President, I would like to thank Mr. Thomas for mentioning those two individuals that will be leaving going into D1 school in January. That could not have happened if we didn't have the administration. They had to declare two years ago that they wanted to be on that track, so I want to thank you because I might be a little bit biased, but I want to thank you for doing that because they had to make certain that they finished up all their curriculum requirements ahead of time, so thank you for your labor of love, your commitment to our students, and making this a better place than they had found it when they got here.
Mr. President, if I could just, as we're going around and thanking, this is the season of Thanksgiving, and I would just like to personally say thank you to Mr. Thomas, because as you can see, he has already given us presents, which speaks to his personality, if nothing else, Mr. Thomas is an extremely generous person, not only with his treasures, but with his time and especially that energy, so thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Again, thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Don't wait for my gift. Go some kind of way.
Let's call it contract.
Okay.
Okay. I like that talk.
Moving on to old business, anybody have anything for old business? Um, I just have one thing for old business. I want to thank everybody that's completed their board self-evaluation.
One exception.
For those who haven't, you've already talked to me and as soon as you can get that done, I greatly appreciate it because we would like to try to present that at our next board meeting, so thank you for coming to me already, and that's all I have for that.
Oh, Mr. President, I don't know whether everyone on the board knows that one of the reasons why Ms. Redden is here is because she lost her sister, her sister, her younger sister, and the services, I believe, is Saturday, so certainly any, any of us would want to attend or give her a call, but I wasn't sure if all of the board members knew that she lost her.
Anybody else have anything for old business? And of course, our condolences do go out to Mrs. Redden. All right, new business?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just, to put an open call, I guess maybe we can give it a few weeks' time to see who would like to be on this committee for the, for the Halls of Fame upcoming, maybe sometime by, maybe mid, mid to late December, because there's a lot of planning that we probably would need to get all, get on.
Okay.
Especially starting in January.
Okay. You got it?
All right.
Anybody else for new business? All right. You're up, Mr. Long.
This is Boyle before I, minutes, anyone, find out?
For public. Ms. Sherman? Are there names on the list? Bring it to me. Nobody?
Thirty-one on, yep. Oh, that's, oh, I guess. I think we're good. A motion to open it up?
Okay, can I have a motion to open public comments?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we open up public comments?
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is nobody, everybody for public comments?
Would you like to make a public comment? Thank you very much. If I may, the Winslow Township Board of Education highly values the input of citizens in making important decisions that affect the children of our communities. We believe in the rights of citizens to observe board meetings, to ensure that all of our citizens have the opportunity to attend board meetings and offer comment, and to ensure that the board can conduct the important visits to the district. We ask that speakers follow the guidelines for making public comment. The Board Secretary will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to make comment. Please respect the following procedure. One, all members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. Two, please state your name and town of residence. Three, please limit your comments to four minutes. Four, submit your questions to the Board of Education with your name, address, and telephone number where you can be reached and where you'd be contacted. Your questions will be answered within a reasonable period of time. Lastly, individuals offering citizen comment are not permitted to make personal attacks at any district employee, board member, or the testifier or member of the public. Do you have a motion at second? I believe in all in favor to open it up for public comment, but you may proceed.
Long, who'll be the second?
Mr. McManus, I believe.
Thank you.
You're good.
I'm calling Lakeisha Smith.
Okay, so I actually have a couple of things after I sat and listened to the whole, but I couldn't, um, I just, my question for the championship football game, my, I just, last year they rode on a yellow school bus while fans, members, and the football team had a charter bus, so I was curious how, what, this game this Sunday, um, payment is, I know, cheerleaders to the fundraiser, and they raised $10,000 with donations that, and me as a parent and other parents had their family members funded, so if it's a financial issue, I think that can come out of the fundraising money. My next thing that I noticed, if, when the boys went to the champion game, if the girls could get varsity jackets, which, champion, one, for each girl that participated in the seat, um, next, uh, during the meeting, I noticed several people couldn't really hear, maybe we could bring the Board of Education up to current times and start doing, in Microsoft Teams, and I wouldn't have had to run out my house and fly in, make a comment, because I couldn't get WebEx that was unavailable. Zoom meeting for Microsoft Teams, raise your hands, hear everybody do their computers, and it's not, um, next, I didn't know we were, Pole Barn, I don't know what it's, um, but since discussing, could we, as far as the bathroom at the football field that's been used to ages and, like, like made for toddlers? And I had a question about the Chromebooks that brought up. I am a parent who got a letter about a Chromebook, I glanced at it, I closed it, I said, I'll look at it, I don't know, and it's for, you have a computer, but, um, and I understand that there are some that are less fortunate, and it may be because halfway, that, like, brushed it off and set it to the side, but, um, I'm not really sure what the Chromebook offered for, because they don't work at home, so it, maybe if that could be expressed more detailed in any further community that's at home. And then the last thing I wanted to just say was that, since we're nearing the end of the year, and I was just listening to some things that were coming up, maybe concerns that affected remainder of the 2025, 2026, and the 2026 school, anything of importance, maybe table or vote until everybody comes back after the holiday, all fresh, that's it. I couldn't, oh, and I could not hear this, young ladies, at all, so that was another Microsoft Team.
So since you got easy questions, I'll answer them. So the teams, Microsoft Teams, we're already on top of that, we'll be introducing that to our community probably by the next board meeting, I, you know, we're looking to introduce it for this meeting, but that will be up and running for the next meeting, for sure. The Pole Barn is a storage facility for the high school and the athletic programs and for buildings and grounds, so in regard to the bathroom, that's something that we can add to our long-term facility plan and look at that in the future. The Chromebooks, it's just another instructional tool, and having those is something that teachers find as a resource for students to do certain programs that they have in, in the school and to continue those programs at home, so if students already have their devices and they want to basically be a, bring your own device to school type of a format, that's something that we can look into, for sure. The cheer bus, I'm already on that, that's something that will be finalized by tomorrow, so you should have something coming from your, your child in regard to their transportation to the championship game, and varsity jackets for cheerleaders is something that we can discuss later.
I thought one more thing out here, can we start on a Friday night? I lived in, all my life, graduate, that lights finals, don't, because, on Friday night, as a member, football fan, I think, Friday night, for next year.
Something else we definitely will consider for next year?
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that's signed up, Ms. Boyle? No, 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 the answer.
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn public comments?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn public.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session?
Yes, sir. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, we'll be adjourned into executive session on November 25th, 2025, at approximately 8:30 PM. Of the nine exceptions under the law that permit us to go into executive session, we'll be utilizing Item 8, matters relating to employment, and this would be specifically a gross employee personnel matter in the Transportation Department, and it's a And it's just an update. I would think fifteen minutes. Fifteen minutes or less. And whoever approves this motion, hold Mr. Davis to fifteen minutes or less.
Can I have a motion to move into executive session?
Can I make a motion to move into executive session?
Roll call, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, yeah. Roll call.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.